Good evening, everyone. Tonight, as we have been for the duration of the pandemic, we are having our monthly November Borough Council meeting using the Zoom platform. We're glad you have joined us virtually tonight for this meeting. Participants attending tonight's virtual meeting via livestream may provide public comment during the public participation and public hearing portion of this meeting. Your comment will be received and read aloud by a staff member so that all of council can hear the question. To comment, participants must log in as a guest and provide their name and address via the livestream chat in order to participate. Please note that there is a 10-second delay when using livestream chat, so there may be an awkward pause before we hear your question. Thank you again for joining us tonight, and we'll now begin our November meeting. With that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. If we can have that on the screen. Very good, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, justiciable, and free.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. With that, we will move into the roll call. Mr. Manager?
Ms. Berkeley. Mr. Dalton. Is there?
Sorry, I was muted. Present, that's so true to 2020.
Gotcha. Ms. Dugan?
Yeah.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Soto? Mr. Weiss?
Present.
Mr. Ewald?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief, and Solicitor here, you have a call, sir.
Thank you. And for the record, Edwin will join us later if he can, but he was unable to sign in at the moment. Moving along, our first item on the agenda tonight is to consider the approval of our October 13th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Any questions, amendments, or corrections to the October minutes? Seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the October 2020 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven zero. Next on our agenda tonight, I don't believe we have any presentations.
Sure.
So with that, we will move into the first round of public participation. Again, for folks who are signing on recently, any members of the public who would wish to make any public comments tonight, we have a public participation period at the beginning and to the end of our meetings. Comment must be logged through our website through the livestream chat feature. Currently, do we have any members of the public raising their hands?
I see nothing at this time. I'm just giving in a minute to see.
Okay, we'll provide an awkward pause here while we allow for the system catch up. Okay. Again, we do have a second round of public participation at the end, towards the end of our meeting. So if any members of the public want to make comment, feel free to do so during the duration of the meeting, and we can read it aloud at the next round of public participation. Let's see, no action, we will close this round of public participation and move into our next agenda item.
John, hold on one second. I do. Dr. David Sennick asked, what are the tax implications for ITR? That's what it says. What are the tax implications for ITR? I'm not sure what he's asking. For item?
Can you clarify what?
It's for item nine D.
We'll be going into all of the, I mean, tonight is budget night, so all tax implications and millage and rates and everything will be discussed under each agenda item that is relevant.
Thank you, Mr. Ewald. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll move into public council participation communications. Any members of council? Any updates or communications? Okay. With that, Mr. Urschler, the mayor's report?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and thank you all very much for those of you who are tuning in at home. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Just a couple of things to report. First, I wanted to wish a very special happy anniversary, 25th anniversary to Papa, Phoenixville Area Positive Alternatives. They have a variety of programs which they conduct here in the Phoenixville community through our school district traditionally that help students to really find wonderful alternatives and very positive things to do within our community. I also want to thank my dear friends at Manavon School and Barclay Elementary School for allowing me to come and visit and talk to you about the job of local elected officials. So thank you very much. All of our second graders have been going through the, through their chapter specifically on civic service and on local government. And so it's been very exciting to hear many of their questions. I will tell you that they have some very exciting and very pressing questions. And so all of you will be very, very proud of the future that we have here within the Phoenixville community. I'd like to give a special shout out to Orion Communities and also our friends at the Phoenixville Area School District for introducing a program which has been in the works for the last probably year, but it's called Bridges Out of Poverty. And we had a number of our staff and the faculty at the Phoenixville Area School District go through it. It's specifically a model to really work together as a community to find a shared language around poverty and how we help people within our community who may be vulnerable or may not have the resources that they need to move forward and how we help people to essentially move forward and ensure that we have a community that is open and available to everyone and ensure that everyone in our community has the opportunity to really succeed and push forward as a family and as an individual. So thank you to Orion specifically for helping to coordinate that and for the school district for all of your support. This week is Be Kind Week from the Communities That Cares. So if you do check out the Communities That Cares website, they have a whole week worth of incredible activities around being kind here within the Phoenixville community. A couple of other things, just want to give a big shout out to all of those who participated in our spookily distant Halloween display. We had over 3,000 of our young friends and their family come through that display on October 31st. There were a number of community organizations which were involved in making sure that that happened. It was essentially a reverse parade, and it was just really, really well done. So thank you to everyone who really helped to bring that together, especially a big thank you to Karen Williams from our Office of Emergency Management, who really helped to coordinate that between all the different organizations. We have coming up on December 12th, there will be another special presentation for the holidays, similar to that spookily distant Halloween display. So keep watching our Facebook pages and our websites, and we'll make sure that we'll put out some more information as it becomes available. Other than that, I just wanted to also wish everyone a very happy Veterans Day tomorrow. So thank you to all of those who have served, who are serving, and those who we also just, who we remember, who are here still with us spiritually. So thank you for your service, certainly to our community and to our country. We owe you a debt of gratitude. It is a debt that certainly we as a community will never be able to repay, but it is a debt that we will never stop trying to repay. So thank you. I know we have a number, I just saw Gene and I know the chief, I know we have a number of individuals on council, on staff, our officers, who are all veterans and who have served our community and our country so faithfully. So thank you very much for your service. Another special note, I just want to thank all of the people who were involved here in the community, in the Phoenixville community, who were involved in the elections last week. Certainly, you know, there's a lot of news coverage, and I generally don't think about the news coverage when I think about Phoenixville, but I look at all the incredible people within our community who really come together to support, to volunteer, to help at the polls. And regardless of what your background is, or what party you're with, or if you're with the party at all, thank you for those of you who are, who participate in that. It's such an important civil, part of the civil process. And so thank you very much for participating. I tell all of the students whenever I meet with them that the incredible thing about the Phoenixville community is that regardless of our backgrounds or our interests or ideals, we're always able to come together in a spirit of mutual respect and understanding. And like a family, we can sit down at the dining room table together. We may not always agree, but we will find a way to move forward as a community and certainly as a country. So thank you all for being part of this incredible community. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we'll move into, made of our agenda, appointments and public resolutions. We have a number of appointments to consider tonight. As we've done for the last couple of months, these have been vetted through the Police Personnel and Public Safety Committee as recommendations. But for those of you watching and listening from home, depending on council's actions tonight, there's typically one or two positions on our various boards and committees that are available with open seats. And even if they don't have open seats, we still welcome applications to these, you know, for future interest. With that, we have four items tonight, and what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, it was with great regret that I asked council to consider the resignation of Dr. Lou Becaria from the Beautification Advisory Commission effective December 31st, 2020. And that was something that, again, as you reviewed, was recommended in Police Personnel and Public Safety Committee three zero.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Dr. Becaria was instrumental. I know he's a, I don't know if he's a founding member. I believe he's the, basically, the, helped to create the BAC and has spearheaded many great projects in the downtown and throughout the borough. And it is, his service on this committee will, has definitely shaped the way that group has been able to enact its visions.
And Mr. President, if I may add, Dr. Becaria is the father of the Beautification Advisory Commission. He's the one who had the idea originally came to council, and it started as an ad hoc advisory committee appointed by the council president, and it started the process to turn it into a formalized borough body. And he is, he is definitely, he's definitely made an impact with it, and he, we could call it the Becaria Beautification Advisory Commission. And that would not be an understatement. So, and I, I agree with Ms. Berkeley's sentiments with accepting this with deep regret.
Well, thank you for that history, Mr. Kirchner. Yeah, I don't want to jump ahead of council president, but I'm assuming we will want to do something to really recognize him. I know, just as someone newly to the community and getting involved specifically, he's been someone who's been really a good mentor. So certainly hope he enjoys his retirement and understand that he's moving towards that phase of life, but we'll miss him greatly, and so will our community.
Any other questions or comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. And then with that, we do have three applications for three different committees tonight.
We do. So with that, I would like to make a motion to consider Jenna Stevens' application for Beautification Advisory Commission for an unfilled term expiring October 31st, 2023. Again, that was discussed, and we got the pleasure of interviewing her in Police and Personnel, and the committee did vote three zero.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, with that, I would also like to recommend to council or make a motion to council to consider Stephanie Covington's, sorry, Stephanie Covington's application to the Human.
Gotta love Zoom.
2020, and my dog. So I would like to make a motion to consider Stephanie Covington's application to the Human Relations Commission for an unfilled term expiring March 30th, 2023.
I'll second that if Ms. Berkeley's dog hasn't already claimed the second.
That's what I figured.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions on this application? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero.
And with that, we do have a final applicant. So I would like to make a motion to consider Jordan Thomas's application to the Rec Board for an unfilled term expiring April 30th, 2024. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Dugan. Any questions on this application? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Well, that does fill a number of the spots that we did have open. There are still a few openings, and our website will be updated later this week with outstanding positions. And when some of those positions do come available for reappointment. So any members of the public that might be interested, I do urge you to reach out to your councilperson or borough staff with any questions. With that, we'll move into the new business section of tonight's agenda. We'll need some background on item A, but we have a zoning hearing board application for 257 Church Street requesting a variance for parking. Mr. Crack, is there a background that we should be?
There is. This is a, this is obviously in the town center. And on the face of it, it's the old Pax Building, for those of you that might know or not know, right at the corner of Church and Gay Street. And the, the building is, you know, for all practical purposes, mostly a residential building, and it should be considered that. The applicant is coming in on, from a different view shed, and appears to be wanting to look at, and Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but appears to be looking at, more or less trying to change the way the building is looked at from its Church Street address to a Gay Street address, and thereby potentially affecting the parking requirement, which would, that would be the variance that would be needed. Normally, as you know, we don't suggest sending staff or the solicitor to zoning hearing board on variances. We usually let them try to stand, but the significance of this request to change the frontage from Gay Street to, I mean, from Church Street to Gay Street, staff, I believe, and Chuck, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're of the opinion that we should be present and make a defense from our perspective that it stay as it is in the borough. And Chuck, you can fill in a little bit more on the background of that.
Yeah, so as Gene has indicated, it appears that there is a proposed change in use to turn this building into, I guess, six residential units, and they're asking for relief from the parking provisions. I guess they're not able to provide any additional parking, and they are asking for variances. Right now, I believe, this is all according to the application, it's offices and warehouse, and it would be a change in use to create essentially six residential units. And they're asking for variances for parking, and a variance appears to convert the property into these residences and offices. I guess they're indicating that the offices would be associated with folks that, you know, work from their home. So a little bit of a different spin.
So our recommendation is that we do send representation to hear this one out, and then be able to make recommendation from our perspective, staff's perspective, council's perspective, to the zoning hearing board, at least not give a free pass on this one. And so that's, that's pretty much the recommendation of staff at this point, Mr. President.
And Mr. President, I don't think this has been advertised, nor do I think it will be advertised in November. I think this will likely be heard in December.
Correct.
So, so we do have our December meeting to address this, if you'd like. And again, we're limited to what we know based on the application at this point. I think the application could be a little more detailed, but it is what we have to look at right now.
Do you need a motion, or what?
We do. We need a motion to authorize sending or to, you know, to suggest sending staff and council to the zoning hearing board.
All right, I'll make that motion that we send staff and council to the zoning hearing board for this particular application.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. Any questions on the motion from the rest of council?
So they're asking for, they'll be going in front of the zoning hearing board to ask for a variance by changing the theoretical entrance to Gay Street and/or a variance to not have to provide parking. That's under?
Yes, that's, that's the, that's the essence of the variance. They don't want, don't think they need to provide any parking for the units they're creating.
Partly because they're calling a, they're saying there's conflict. But then they're making the, in the alternative description of how the building would be configured, is that also going to be in front of the zoning hearing board at the time, or they're going to come back to us for that?
Nope.
Okay.
Everything would be in front of the zoning hearing board. And again, it's not clear from the application, but I presume they're asking for a variance on that as well.
Yeah, because I, I don't even know that we have a, do we even have a description that covers a commercial office space that is also a residential space?
Typically, that would be a codes issue, wouldn't it?
I would tend to agree with you. It's certainly something that they would have to show hardship in order to get their relief.
Yeah, and also, like, is that a primary residence, or is it an office, and they're not the primary residence? On the first, it's like, there are a whole bunch of questions.
Well, I think, I think the application tries to make their argument for what they want to do, but that, that's up to the zoning hearing board based upon the facts that get presented at the time of the hearing.
Any other questions from council on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Up next, basically every year, we look to cancel our committee meetings for December. After our council meeting, what is council's pleasure for our December scheduling?
Mr. President, I move we cancel the committee meetings, Police Personnel, Public Safety, Parks and Recreation, Infrastructure, Finance, and Policy Committees for December 2020.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any questions on this motion, Ms. Dugan?
Yeah, I'm just wondering with finance, I kind of feel like we should be fine, but like, doesn't it send the wrong signal that we're already saying, okay, that's over, we don't even need to read, we don't even need to discuss anything in December? But I mean, I mean, I don't even know how to say that, but I think we should kind of hold off on the finance until we're sure.
Well, the regular finance committee meeting would be on, let's see, oh, it would be the 22nd, right? It would be the fourth Tuesday.
22nd.
Yeah. So.
Okay, I'll be.
You want to meet, you want, you want to meet that week?
But you know what? I remember coming here or going to a meeting in the middle of, like, the week between Christmas and New Year's one year. So, I mean, like.
They were the bad old days, Dana.
Yeah, we don't do that anymore. Let's hope.
All right. All right.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. And next on our agenda is the review of the 2021 General Fund and Enterprise Funds Draft Budget. Mr. Crack, I believe this is your show?
Oh, this is going to be interesting, because I've not done anything like this before with a PowerPoint presentation. So as you know, each year I try to put up a snapshot, a visual snapshot of all of the things that the Finance Committee and ancillary, and similarly, the other committees with their input and staff input on the 2021 budget. And so this is, I want to emphasize, this is the draft budget. There's things that I'll say in here that are still in a state of flux. I think in a positive way, meaning that if I have numbers, they're arguably on the high side in some cases. And so, as you know, we try to, try to get as much information as we can, but there are some things that were impractical and are impractical, such as today, at noon time, we finally got through the bond, GeoBond auction. And there's no way that we could just, you know, pull all of those numbers in time for tonight's meeting. We also know that we're still hanging out with our insurance carrier. Most of you that have been around a while, you know, that's no surprise. They're always late into the November timeframe. We expect those numbers to be better than what's in the budget, which will be helpful. And of course, the county almost always only gets us the assessed valuation, the true assessed valuation sometime in the middle of November. That's no departure from what it's always been. So we have three items that have a lot of weight. Arguably, our numbers are high. That's a good thing. Those numbers should come in better, and we'll take it from there. So I just want to walk through, I do this every year. The first slide that you'll have is just a very quick snapshot of about the borough. Most of you have seen this before, but some of the folks that maybe in the audience may not have seen this. So it's a, it's a demographic of where we are with the borough. The, you know, we're over 17,000 people. We have an anticipated assessed valuation in the next week or so of about 801 million. That's, remember that set, I believe it's a 40, 49 point something or 48 point something common level ratio, which means that the true valuation is well into the billion number for the borough. And then, of course, you know, we've got all this roadway and sidewalks and crosswalks and streetlights, et cetera, et cetera. So this is just a very quick snapshot to remind folks that the maintenance that the borough streets department and sanitation department and water department and stormwater and wastewater, all of those come into play with all of these things. So, next slide, please. And just to remind council, we've, we've done a lot of things over the last, I believe this starts in 2011 through 20, through this year, 2020. Over $19 million worth of projects within the borough's general fund area of responsibility, over $10 million in the water department's area of responsibility. area of responsibility, uh, over ten million in the water department's area of responsibility. And, uh, approaching eight million on the wastewater side of things. So, uh, we've done a lot of, uh, improvements. Uh, we continue to do improvements. And just to be, uh, sure, a lot of that information that's there is the result of the, the staff, especially Kelly. The assistant manager, Kelly Guestery, who, who was the premier writer of, uh, most of our grants, helps us get the, the funding from, uh, federal, state, regional, uh, county governments. And then even some private sector, uh, funding such as William Penn, uh, et cetera. So, uh, a lot of hard work, a lot of things have been accomplished, and, uh, I think you see the results in and around town. The next slide is just merely a, it's always a reminder, uh, it's, it's the one, you know, I, I, I kind of remind people that village is, it is, it's by three taxing authorities. One is the county, which is the green. One is us, which is the blue, and then one is in, in the red, which is the, uh, the school district. Uh, it's just merely to remind people that, uh, the, the taxation that are paid through, uh, their real estate goes to three different taxing bodies, and this is the, uh, the chemical makeup of where it goes with those. Uh, one of the good things, that next slide, one of the good things that we, uh, like to emphasize is that the borough is, in its pension fund, is, uh, one of the better municipalities, uh, out there. Jen, you wanna move? Maybe? It hung up. There it goes. We're one of the very, very, very few, and you've heard our auditor, uh, say this, municipalities that is fully funded. Then asked through the, uh, the, the hard work of the pension committee, the, uh, borough council, uh, and staff working together to make sure that, uh, that we allocate the appropriate funds. And we, we keep that fund, uh, where, where it is right now. That's at twelve million, over twelve million for the non-uniformed and over fifteen million for the police fund, both as of June thirtieth. Uh, it does require, uh, input, uh, from, from, uh, borough council to, to help pay for this. As you can see, uh, the non-uniform does contribute to their, uh, to the pension plan, uh, the police do not. And these are the numbers that, that get us there. But most municipalities in Pennsylvania are under seventy percent funded. So, uh, for us to be at, right at, uh, a hundred percent funded is, is basically rare air. General Fund Debt Service. The, the note, the, the information I'm gonna show you here is based on the, the information prior to today. Prior to today, uh, we had a general obligation bond of seven point two five million. And its mature date is in twenty thirty-seven. We anticipate for twenty twenty-one, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and one will go to that twenty-twelve geo bond. Assuming you take action tonight, we potentially will have a twenty-twenty bond. And I'll explain those numbers, uh, further down the line. But this is the number based off of, uh, current, uh, current debt service. Fire department, uh, this is the, the current, uh, uh, department funding sans action you may take tonight. If you take action tonight, these numbers will change because we will, and we will institute a, a new way of, uh, taxation, uh, general fund taxation, fire department taxation. And you'll see in a second, recreation fund taxation. Those numbers are not here yet because we weren't able to crunch all that since, you know, basically noon to one o'clock this afternoon. But that, those numbers will come in there. I'll be able to explain the total effect in a, in a few seconds, but this is the slide that just shows where we're at as of, as of today. If we didn't move forward with, uh, the, the building of the new recreation center or, uh, new fire station, this would be the general operating budget, uh, needed to run the fire department, uh, as, as, as it is currently located, uh, on Church Street. Similarly, the Parks and Recreation Fund is, is the same scenario. We are basing this on their location at one, two, three Main Street. Assuming you move forward with the, uh, the bond tonight, uh, the construction of the new recreation building up, uh, at the intersection of Fillmore and Franklin, uh, would generate, uh, the bond mechanism. We will then incorporate the, uh, the part of the tax that goes directly to the Parks and, and Recreation Fund to manage all of the, uh, the general fund information as well as the, uh, the, the debt service that would be associated with a bond. This is the general, uh, fund needed if we were to just stay at one, two, three Main Street. Liquid fuels, uh, Ms. Dugan's favorite, uh, location because it's, it takes care of itself. Hardly any votes are required for this one. Uh, it manages itself, uh, very well. Uh, we do have some, uh, capital requests, uh, that, uh, are, are associated with this. But, uh, uh, these are not, uh, this is if, uh, liquid fuels comes from the, the funding that we get from motor vehicle taxes of gasoline, uh, throughout the state. Now, the twenty twenty, uh, is, is certainly having an effect on, uh, the fact that a lot of cars did not drive in twenty twenty. And so twenty twenty-one, we're gonna see some, uh, probable adjustments downward as it relates to the receipts that we will get from the state. But this is, uh, this fund takes care of itself. It's not associated with the, with the general fund. But these are the things that we will be buying, uh, in twenty twenty-one to keep the, keep that, uh, the lights going. And, uh, the, the work that needs to be done on the street. So, uh, a new traffic arm, a new, uh, truck for the, for the department, a new asphalt rower. I'm not, in nineteen eighty-three is a long time ago, so, uh, I'm not even sure if it rolls, uh, in a straight line anymore. Uh, and then a grapple bucket for that, for this skid steer. So we're, we're able to do these things, uh, because that, that, that funding that's available from the, uh, the, uh, the amount of miles driven by folks in, in Pennsylvania. And then, of course, this is what shows you the, the, the liquid fuels revenue for twenty twenty-one anticipated. What we expect to spend on that, and then, uh, the fund balance as of, uh, I guess it was last week, uh, eight hundred and five thousand. So this is broken into two parts. One is the, uh, the capital side, uh, where we're able to, uh, purchase the, the larger equipment and things. And then the other part of that is all of the maintenance, uh, paying for, uh, even things such as snow plowing, uh, the, the electric for the lights and, uh, the replacement of the lights and, and all of that stuff, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
That just seems kind of high.
What's that?
It seems kind of high, like, I mean, like, we're not spending the amount of money that we would get back if we were actually spending it. I can't believe I'm actually arguing for this.
We, we roll, we, we try to keep our capital projects spent in line with the, with the percentage. I believe it's twenty percent, uh, we were allowed to keep separate for capital projects and what have you. And then what we do is we roll out, uh, as, uh, I think you'll recall, every, uh, every couple of years, we do a waterworks project or a sewer project where, where, where we use this funds to, we'll go into the road, dig it up, do all of the work that's necessary there, and then come back and use liquid fuels to pave that road. Uh, so we, we maximize the, uh, the opportunity by using liquid fuels in that, in those areas. But also reducing, uh, double the work because we only have to go to that street one time. So this is a, this is an off year. Uh, uh, next year we'll come back and probably have a list.
Okay.
General fund, okay. So in the general fund, uh, we do pay for, uh, a lot of, uh, capital. There's, uh, two items in fire. The furniture's fixtures and equipment line item is the, the things that the bond will not, uh, pay for. It's not that it won't pay for it. We don't recommend using, uh, bond money to pay for things that would, it would likely, expire, uh, their, their use of time prior to the bond paying off. So we want to use, uh, the, the fund balance to pay for things that will have an earlier expiration date than a normal, uh, a building. The building's gonna last forty or fifty years. Uh, the desks are probably not gonna last forty or fifty years. We don't wanna, we don't wanna, uh, incur debt service for something that's not gonna be around down the road. We have two items in the police department. One is a replacement SUV. Uh, that's, uh, that's a regular, uh, occurring item. And then, uh, given the, uh, the concerns of citizens that we've experienced in twenty twenty and actually twenty nineteen, uh, going back in time, uh, the chief has indicated or recommended we get a speed trailer where we can take that trailer anywhere in the borough and set up, uh, uh, locations to remind people how fast they're going. This is, I think this is gonna be a good, uh, good item for the police department and a good item for the community. Uh, and then recreation, back to that furniture, fixtures, equipment, we don't wanna spend, uh, uh, the, the thirty-year bond money on something that may expire, uh, much earlier than that. And so that item is in here. And then in the streets department, uh, we have a couple of electrical upgrades. Uh, we, we need to do those things. And then finally, uh, we have upgrades in the, uh, council chambers. Later on, I believe you'll see, there's a public hearing regarding a, uh, an ordinance for the cable franchise agreement. The actual cost of this is nineteen thousand, five hundred, but fifteen thousand of that is going to come from, uh, resigning the franchise agreement with, with Comcast. So the actual cost, uh, in this case would be four thousand, five hundred from, uh, from the fund balance. So cumulatively, we have a million three of, of, of capital fund request for twenty twenty-one. And then personnel requests, uh, we have salary adjustments, uh, that were discussed with, uh, borough council. This is, uh, this is a three-year program, uh, that was agreed to. Uh, this would be the third year of that. Uh, and basically what that does is it gets, uh, all the, uh, the, the key, excuse me, the key players, the non-uniform, non-union players that work for the borough. It incentivizes them to be, it's in a competitive, uh, salary adjustment to keep them wanting to stay here. And should they, uh, retire or leave early for, for whatever the reason, then we're able to go out and get, uh, qualified employees competitively. That's been one of the issues that we've had in, at least the time that I've been here, is, uh, we haven't been competitive to the municipalities in, in the region. Council, uh, uh, agreed with us a couple of years ago, and this is the third year of that. And then in recreation, we have a, a, a part-time position that we were going to do actually in twenty twenty. Uh, and then, you know, this whole, uh, pandemic, uh, popped up at about the same time. And we just saw, uh, uh, that it wasn't appropriate to, you know, move the position in the full time at that time. Uh, so we went ahead and, and moved it into twenty twenty-one, council has, has agreed. And so these are the first, uh, requests for twenty twenty. So the, the general fund revenue, this revenue reflects the, the, the concept that council will be moving forward with the, uh, with the twenty twenty geo bond. And so the total revenue anticipated for twenty twenty twenty-one will be fifteen million one. And then the, uh, fund expenditures will be sixteen million seven with a, uh, a deficit of eight hundred and nine. That deficit gets made up in what you see as the tax mileage below, where it moves from six point two three to seven point three zero. You'll see later, the, the CBT, in the tax, proposed tax ordinance, that that is broken up, that seven point three is broken up in, by three categories. One is the general fund portion, one is the fire portion, and then one is the, the recreation portion. Sanitation, um, a couple of capital requests, uh, a new, uh, the purchase of a new trash truck, additional trash motors replaced the ones that are now, uh, approaching, uh, ten years old. And then, uh, part of the electrical work that was mentioned a few minutes ago in the public works building, this is the sanitation electrical share of that, uh, that upgrade. The other came out of the streets department. And again, the, the third year of the salary adjustment for the, uh, for the one employee, and then changing a labor one position to a labor two position. So these are the capital personnel requests for twenty twenty-one. Sanitation revenue is at one million nine, uh, expenditures, one million nine and four. So we have a, a tet, a net, uh, positive of eighty-one, uh, approximately eighty-one thousand. You can see our, our fund balance. We have a good, healthy fund balance. We're even with what we're going to do in twenty twenty-one, it still leaves us with a good, healthy, uh, fund balance. There is no recommendation to change the rates, uh, for, uh, twenty twenty-one. And, okay, parking. No capital, uh, no capital requests. Uh, we do have, uh, a recommendation and, and council has agreed at this time to convert to part-time to one full-time. Uh, we, we've had those two part-times open arguably for two years and have just not been able to fill them. In reassessing the parking department, uh, over the last couple of months, we've come, uh, to the conclusion that it would be better to not try to find those part-times, but actually, uh, to enhance the department by turning it into, uh, a full-time person. And this would be the, the additional cost to do that above what the two part-time persons would be. So for twenty twenty-one, uh, the three hundred and sixty-three is what we're anticipating coming in. Now, this is, this is low, uh, because we don't want to, uh, anticipate things that we don't know are, are going to or not going to happen. The whole pandemic really hit the, the parking department, uh, hard. Uh, as you can appreciate, there are things and actions that we took that, uh, actually, uh, helped in a bad way, helped, uh, hold that, that, that number down. And that is by opening up the streets. But the converse to that is, is that by closing down the streets, we help the businesses. So, which is the better thing to do? We looked at our, uh, we looked at our fund balances, as you can see on here, and we made the decision that we could absorb those costs for a year to eighteen months, try to get ourselves through the, the whole pandemic and hope that the, the, everything comes back to the normal, uh, if that's a term that I can use. And that we don't necessarily are closing down the streets, uh, to help the businesses, but that we may be doing other things and then the, the parking and, and that comes back to, to life. Uh, this does not anticipate, uh, the, uh, the leases that we are working our way through. Will, we, we are signing the lease with the customer's bank, uh, anticipate that will open up probably the first of the year. The one thirty-one mains, uh, Bridge Street, uh, parking lot, which is actually on Main Street. We're meeting with them next week and will probably get through a lease arrangement with them. Those are numbers that are not anticipated in these parking revenue. So it's very probable those numbers are gonna go up, but we had to show what we, what we think is real at this point in time. And so we have a low, uh, income and a high expenditure. And we've, you know, the expenditure is, is only, uh, been modified by that thirty-eight thousand on the additional change from two part-timers to the, to the one full-time. Uh, but as you can see, we, we, we think we can absorb it, uh, and we're, we're hoping like everybody else is hoping that we'll get through all of this. Water fund, uh, does have a debt service itself. It's, it's what's called self-liquidating debt. It came out of the twelve, uh, twenty twelve, uh, bond. That bond was for thirty-three million, nine hundred and sixty. As of December thirty-first, uh, basically sitting right at a million. Uh, the bond is set to mature in, uh, November of twenty twenty-seven. The debt transfer to that is one million, uh, absolutely, well, a hundred and sixty-four thousand, eighty-two for twenty twenty-one. The water fund itself, uh, capital personnel request, you can see there's a lot of, uh, a lot of items that are in there. These are all, uh, necessary, uh, components to keep the, the plant running, uh, to keep everything running smoothly. There's a, uh, basically at the end of the day, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand of, of capital requests and a, uh, additional mechanical relief operator at ninety-nine thousand, five hundred. And if you look at the, the water fund, uh, we have anticipated revenue of four, four million, five. Expenditures of four million, just over four million. So, uh, uh, a net increase of five, uh, income of five hundred and twelve. Uh, we have a five million dollar fund balance, but I, I wanna remind you that that is, uh, that is primarily the result of the recent sale of the assets which occurred, uh, December of, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, which was three point five million of that. So, uh, we have, uh, we have the, uh, a very healthy fund balance. Obviously, we're projecting. Obviously, we're projecting with the use of the funds, still a healthy fund balance, and of course, no need to. To do the, any rate increase. So. Sad wastewater, wastewater, again, self liquidating. The original bond was for eight million five. We're down to four million ninety-five. It also will pay off in twenty twenty seven. The debt service payment for that in twenty twenty one will be six hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and fifteen. You can see we have a number of capital requests. That work itself out to two million, two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred. The. Water revenue of three million four hundred and seventy. The water expenditures of two million six hundred and ninety-four. A net total of seven seventy-five. But I also want to remind you that we have a very significant project that we're working towards, which is why. We're keeping that fund balance going up because the SOMAX project relies on the fact that. We have over two million dollars worth of funds that are going to go to that, to that SOMAX project. Be that as it may, there's still no recommendation, there's no recommendation to change the, the rate. It will stay at six. Dollars and fifty cents per thousand of metered water. So the total, total. All these items combined. The total budget of Phoenixville is twenty-five million one hundred and seventy-one and three hundred and eight dollars. And then the last item is basically my conclusionary statement that says we're doing really good. We've got a good, healthy bond rating. That was evidenced today in what we got. We. The, the bond, we, we anticipated in the budget, in the draft budget, a bond rating of two point six. And the bond rating that came in at the, through the auction today came in at two point three four, I believe it was. So that, that, as I said earlier in this, in this presentation. That's going to come across and we'll make some adjustments for the finance committee next week to show the. Hopefully, all three of those items that I mentioned, the, the adjustment in the bond. The adjustment in the general liability insurance and then the. Assess valuation of the borough itself. I've said a lot. There's a lot there. I'm more than happy to answer any questions of council. And if there are any questions by the public at the, the public participation at the end of the meeting.
Mr. Moore.
Question. For Gene, two, two questions on the SOMAX project. At what point, or is it broken up? Will we need to have that two million?
I would like to, Mr. Moore, I would like to think that it's going to be in twenty twenty one. As you, as you're aware, we're, we're going through the, the process of trying to, to get the permit with, with DEP. But you've also heard me. Think or talk a little about. You know, there's, there's chicken or egg. We can keep waiting for the permit and the price of the equipment keeps going up, keeps escalating. The other side of that coin is to, you know, we've got state funding and we've got county funding. So there's skin in the game. By three players, the borough, the state and the, the county. And so there's a, there's a, a thought that, you know. Maybe we start to look at some of the high-priced items or the long lead items and we, we go in and actually acquire those components. Even though we don't necessarily have the permit. That's, that's, you know, tantamount to leveraging your, your, your funding towards the asset. But that's a decision that we haven't made yet with council. We've talked about it. So there's some, some thinking that's going to have to go on in, I'd say in the next quarter. We're going to have to decide which direction we want to go. Do we want to, do we want to go ahead and move forward and there's a risk for moving forward? Or do we continue to hold back and, and, you know, wait for the, wait for the actual permit, which we don't have an end aim. Timeline at this point in time. I hope that answered your question.
Well. We could need to be able to make some of the expenditures of that two million in the coming twenty twenty one year and.
Does our budget. Certainly, we are certainly moving forward with the county funding. We, we actually got. The, I think what we. What would be the, 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 the numbers we need for the concrete floor for the greenhouse. That information came in today. I haven't had a chance to, to assess it and to talk to Mr. Watson about it at this juncture. But if that's true, our goal is to. Move forward with that portion of it. As you may recall, that's, that's the county funding. We want to get out from under that grant because it allows us to go for other grants with the county. So we do want to move that forward and anticipate that we could have that done by the end of this year.
Okay. Could I ask this a question more, maybe more of Kelly? In terms of the landscape of grants, given a year of COVID. Are they being withdrawn? Are they being downsized with, what's the, you know, we've been such a great, I've been such a great engine. What's the? What's your projection is that's going to continue?
Um, I.
Maybe it's too soon.
I don't know. I think that we've heard a little bit of, of both. I think it's all about how ready your projects are. So these types of projects, and honestly, that is the, the foresight of. Having council invest in the, the engineering and the design of a lot of these projects. We're, we're shovel-ready with a lot of those. So I think that. The funding that we have, because these projects haven't stayed stagnant in the status and are moving forward, even though it could be at a very slow pace. I don't see anything being taken away, at least for as we know now. I mean, that could change at any time. At, at any point. Honestly, COVID or not, I mean, that just can happen. I think that there also will be honestly investments in infrastructure and in economic development. We, we saw that as after, you know, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight timeframe. There were more grants available to boost the economy. So I think that. We'll be able to see those differences and capitalize on them as best we can. But we're in a good spot with the fact that our projects are shovel-ready or very close to being shovel-ready. And we're already investing in the design and engineering of those. So I mean, that's my best guess. And as long as we keep going forward in that capacity. You know, and I was trying to go for them. We're, we're lucky that we, we keep on a schedule of applying for grants all, all year and every year. And multiple sources for grants, multiple funding sources, like we have county, we have state. If there's something that's federally available, we'll go for it. You know, we, we try our best with that.
Those are my questions, Mr. President.
Any other questions from council on our managers? Budget update. Draft budget update. Let's see, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Gene. And do we, is a motion needed to advertise this?
No, you, you, you provided that at the last meeting. So. It, it's being advertised. It will be for Monday to sixteenth. And that's for a period of ten days.
Very good. I'll see no other questions or comments on that. We'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which ties in nicely. Which is related to our bond.
What I'd like to do, Mr. President, if it's okay, I'd like to at least ask either. Mr. Paul Ceni or, or, or Ryan to. Just give a quick overview of what happened today and then segue that into Dave Uncle Vic. To explain what the, the bond ordinance sits before you. Well. I guess the first thing is maybe a recommendation or feedback from the, either Gary or Ryan. And then councils should probably make a motion and then Dave can explain what the ordinance is. That, did I get it right, Chuck?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay.
Right. That sounds great. Thank you all very much. It's a pleasure being here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right, excellent. As you all know, the, this morning, we went out for an auction on the financing for the Borough of Phoenixville's two thousand and twenty bonds. It was held on Grant Street's auction website. The start of the auction started at eleven o'clock and it was scheduled to proceed until eleven fifteen. The way the auction is set up is that as bids are received, bidders cannot see what other people bid as far as an all-in interest rate. However, they can see where they are in position. So if they, they put in a bid and they realize that they are not first, they can resubmit. And if they resubmit within a two-minute window before the auction is closed and it becomes a high bid, it then is extended. In this case, we had three bidders join the auction. And the low bid came in from Robert Baird and Company. At a total true interest cost fixed through the life of the loan, of the bonds at two point three four nine percent. We award based on the all-in lowest cost, the, or the, the true interest cost, the tick. And obviously, two point three four nine is a fantastic rate. When you look at historic norms to lock in thirty-year rates on a bank, a non-bank qualified issue. At really under two point four percent is really a great transaction. The second cover bid, which is really because who comes in second on their pricing? Was Jenny Montgomery Scott at a interest cost of two point four two. So you're really looking at saving. About twelve basis, not twelve basis points, about eight basis points over the life. Which adds up to about two hundred thousand dollars of interest overall. All in, when you look at the debt service on this new debt service. Is being, it will be one series, the two thousand and twenty bonds. However. For you internally, you're splitting that into two projects. You're splitting it into the fire station project and recreation center project. The average debt service on the borrowing. Comes to seven hundred thousand dollars a year, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. We'll round up and call that seven hundred thousand. And really, the split is pretty much right down the middle, about three hundred and forty-six, three hun-. Three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for the fire station annually and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the fire station, for the recreation center. So overall. You know, great result for the borough. You can't really argue with two point three five six percent fixed for thirty years. And believe you have a really great offer here from, from Barrett. And so the ordinance in front of you is the approving ordinance for this transaction. I'll let Dave discuss exactly what the ordinance is doing and. The actions you'll be taking this evening.
Thank you, Ryan, for that. That, that was definitely helpful. I, I didn't, I didn't know all of that. So when I was watching it today, I, I was curious as to. How it went through and why it went through. So that makes a lot more sense. With that, we should move into a motion for this, correct, Gene?
Yes.
Yes.
So with that, what is council's pleasure regarding the item D?
I'll make a motion to approve. Everything that's on that screen. I don't even know. I, I, should I read the whole thing?
Chuck.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you should read the, the, the motion into the record. And, and I think I saw the, the new ordinance amount was fourteen million, three hundred and five thousand. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Do you feel like somebody else should start this and I should just say so moved because I feel like I'm going to miss something legally important?
I'll do it. Okay.
Moore.
Make a motion to consider an ordinance authorizing the occurrence of non-electoral debt in accordance with the Low Government Unit Debt Act. As amended and to evidence such indebtedness. By the issuance of its general obligation bonds, series of twenty twenty, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of. Fourteen million, three hundred, five thousand?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
The, also known as the bonds, with the proceeds to be applied for and toward A. Financing certain capital projects, the capital projects consisting of, one. The construction of a new borough-owned recreation center, two, the construction of a new borough-owned fire and emergency services station. And improvements to Paradise Street for urgency services accessibility, and three, other capital projects as may be approved by the governing body. And B, the payment of the cost of issuance related to the issuance of the bonds.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. I believe Chuck, we, we hit all the points there, I believe.
Yes, yes, you did. Very good.
Council question, well, we will now go into a presentation with, with Dave, I believe.
Yes, good evening.
Hopefully, this should hopefully answer any questions related to the actual ordinance. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. You may remember at your meeting last month. The ordinance was introduced. But it had blanks in it for all of the pricing information on the bonds. So when the bonds priced today. This afternoon, we plugged in all the numbers that Ryan just went through into the ordinance. So it's got the fourteen million, three hundred, five thousand principal amount. And it shows all the interest rates for all the maturities for the bonds. That were in the pricing today. So bottom line is you're basically. Acting tonight on the ordinance. That you looked at last month with the pricing inserted in it. I'm not going to go through the whole ordinance again unless you want me to, but I, I wanted to highlight three sections, which are the most important ones. Section one. On page three authorizes the issuance of this debt, the fourteen million, three hundred, five thousand of bonds. And it authorizes the use of that money for the projects which have been described. So that's an important thing. The, secondly, there's section four, on page four, called covenant to pay the bonds. That's your covenant or agreement over time to budget appropriate and pay each year. During the life of the bond issue, the amount of debt services due on the, the bonds that year. And in connection with that budgeting appropriation and payment. You're pledging your full faith, credit and taxing power, which basically means the whole economic. Ability of the borough to make the payment and ultimately your real estate tax base to back up the repayment of the bond. So that's the security. For the bonds that the, the bondholders are looking for. And then section eleven on page eleven. Is called manner of sale award of bonds. So that indicates that your. Issuance of the bonds through this internet bidding process, you, you determine was the best way to have priced these bonds. And you award the bonds as a result of that process today to Robert W. Baird, which is the investment banking firm. That put in the low bid for the bonds. And so you're, you're approving the award of the bonds to them. So bottom line is if you enact the ordinance today. You're approving the issuance of the debt for the purposes of the projects that have been described. And you're awarding the bonds to Robert W. Baird. If you approve the ordinance tonight. We will do a filing in the next week or so with the Department of Community and Economic Development. They have twenty days to approve the bond issue. And so we'd be looking to close. A month from now on, on December tenth. And I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Questions from council. I know this is a, a, a record-length ordinance, I believe. So. I believe most of it's pretty boilerplate pertaining to, to bonds. But any questions from our council members related to this for, for our consultants here? Gene or Chuck, any other background information we should be. Providing on this from your perspectives?
I, I think that's pretty much, you know, covered it, John. I, I would just ask for purposes of the debt act, if you could do a roll, roll call vote on the, on the ordinance on this one.
Very good. Okay, I see no questions from, from council. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Moore motioned, Ms. Dugan seconded. So we'll proceed with a roll call vote. Mr. Crack.
Chris Berkeley.
Chris Berkeley.
Hi.
Mr. Dalton.
He's there.
Mr. Dalton? Is that a yes? A baby? Raise your hand if it's a yes. Okay.
There we go.
Ms. Dugan?
Aye.
Mr. Kirchner?
Nay.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Soto is not here? Mr. Weiss? Mr. E. Walt?
Aye.
Motion passes six, one.
Very good. I thank you to, to, uh, David and Gary and Ryan, uh, we appreciate all the, uh, assistance on this process.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, that, uh, that concludes our new business section of the agenda. Um, with that, we will move into, uh, I don't believe we have any resolutions tonight. Um, we do have, uh, a public hearing for the consider, uh, the ordinance authorizing the execution of the cable franchise agreement. This was advertised, uh, I believe at our last meeting. Uh, so we would need a motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved?
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Uh, Chuck?
So thank you, Mr. President. This, this is a, uh, public hearing in order to take public comment uh, with respect to a proposed cable franchise agreement between the borough and Comcast of Southeast Pennsylvania LLC. Um, procedurally, both the public hearing notice as well as the ordinance that you will have in front of you tonight was advertised in the Mercury on October twenty-sixth of this year. Um, some of the main points of the proposed franchise agreement, uh, would be as follows. Uh, first, the proposed term of the agreement is for twelve years. It would begin January first of next year, if you chose to enact it. Um, the agreement, uh, updates and expands, uh, the definition of gross revenues. Uh, I think council's aware that, uh, the borough receives franchise fees from, uh, the cable provider based upon, uh, the gross revenue definition. Uh, the agreement provides for the borough to receive, uh, five percent franchise fees, which is actually the, the maximum permitted under federal law. Um, I think, uh, the manager indicated previously that, uh, the proposed agreement does provide for a franchise grant from Comcast to the borough in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, the agreement also continues to provide to the borough, uh, use of a education and government channel as we have now. Um, the new agreement also allows the borough the right to, uh, prepare an audit to make sure we're receiving the correct amount of the franchise fees, uh, on a regular basis. Uh, if it turns out that, uh, we were being, uh, underpaid by greater than five percent, uh, Comcast would contribute, uh, three thousand dollars to the cost of that audit. Um, at this point, I would open up the, uh, open up the, uh, matter for public comment. Uh, Mr. President, Jen, if anyone wishes to provide comment, now would be the time.
Thank you, Chuck. Uh, with that, I, as we mentioned at the start of the meeting, if there's any public comment, uh, many members of the public that are viewing this at home, that would like to make any questions or comments pertaining to this ordinance, uh, comment is available through the comment box on the live stream system through the website. Um, any of those comments will come into staff and staff will read them aloud. We'll sit here idly by for a moment to see if any comments do come in through our chat system.
Mr. President, obviously, the, the ordinance in and of itself simply authorizes the execution of the cable franchise agreement. There's not any other magic to the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Chuck.
At this time, Mr. President, I don't see any comment coming through. I'll tell you if that changes.
Give it a few more moments here. Okay. Uh, see no, uh, public comment on this, uh, public hearing. Uh, we can have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. Uh, this, this ordinance has been advertised. Uh, I believe we can take action tonight, um, if it is council's pleasure to do so.
Uh, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to, uh, take action on an ordinance of the council of the Borough of Phoenixville authorizing the execution of the cable franchise agreement between the borough and Comcast of Southeast Pennsylvania LLC. Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Okay, thank you all on that one. And with that, we will move into our reports of committees, boards, and commissions. So, uh, Mr. Moore with our planning commission.
Uh, nothing to report. There was no, uh, planning commission meeting last week, uh, last month, and there will be a planning commission meeting, uh, this coming Thursday night at seven PM on, for, on Zoom.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Weiss for Harb?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just, uh, one item, uh, for tonight. Um, so I'll make a proposal to consider the approval of the certificate of appropriateness for the new sign request for one oh one Bridge Street as recommended five oh in Harb, or in the Harb action memo of November third, twenty twenty. Uh, happy to answer any questions about it as well.
Second?
Second?
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the application for one oh one Bridge? Very good. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Question, and, uh, anything else from Harb, Mr. Weiss?
Uh, no, just our next meeting is, uh, scheduled for December seventh. I don't believe it was one of the, uh, meetings that we voted to cancel. Is that correct? For December?
Not at this time.
Okay. Yep, so we're still on. So the next meeting is scheduled for December seventh at five PM.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Uh, Regional Planning Committee, Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The only thing to announce is that on Wednesday, December ninth, um, after the, the normal, the, the regular meeting of the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee at seven thirty PM, there will be a public participation workshop regarding the revision of, to the regional comprehensive plan to accommodate the addition of West Viclin Township to the group. That's it. December nine, after, uh, the regular meeting at seven thirty PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Uh, Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, I've got a couple things, um, here because we have, uh, we still are doing yoga in the park and that's Thursdays from, uh, six to seven at Reeves Park. And we've got a lot of virtual programs. So, um, we've got, uh, like, oh, here's a good one. The December third at seven o'clock, we've got the holiday swags. It's a um, a hands-on family program to create decorations for, you know, the time of year, like Christmas stuff. And, um, there's another thing we've got, if I can just find the tab to click. Uh, we're doing, uh, bingo. Uh, we're gonna try this virtual bingo. It's gonna be fun. I'm going to call it as usual, but we're gonna do, it's gonna be a whole virtual thing. It's all free. And if you call in and call the, uh, or click on the, the link on the website, you'll figure out a way to get in there. It's like limited participation because of the, you know, situation, but we're still doing the bingo this year. So I hope everybody participates and that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Dugan. And with that, uh, Mr. Soto's not here tonight. I don't believe there's any action out of BAC. Not sure if anybody else, Mr. Crack, if you had any updates on that?
Uh, no, just the, uh, you know, the fact that, uh, uh, the father of the committee, uh, Dr. Beckeria, uh, obviously is, is resigning at the end of this year. Um, I suspect they, they have their meeting in, uh, December, I think it's the fourteenth. Um, I don't know if they'll make a decision as to who will, uh, if they, whoever it is has a lot of shoes to, a lot of large shoes to fill there. So, um, they gotta decide amongst themselves who that is, but uh, that's probably the next thing that they, they're really gonna be working on is who's gonna lead them, uh, moving forward and uh, uh, you know, how it moves in twenty twenty-one. Uh, I will have a list of the, the three awards. You know, they have the residential, the commercial, uh, I forget the third one, but those awards are targeted for your December, uh, December eighth meeting, and I'll have that information in the, in the packets uh, from Dr. Beckeria, uh, for that meeting.
Thank you, Gene. Uh, moving on to council action referred from our committees, uh, Ms. Berkeley with police public and, uh, police, public safety and personnel.
Say that three times fast.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have any action to report except what we had discussed and voted on earlier. Um, as far as the appointments, again, we are continuing to interview applicants for boards and commissions through that committee. Um, given the vote on meetings for December, we won't meet again until January fourth, but I would invite other council members that may not be on the committee regularly or any members of the public that wanna be part of those interviews, hear those interviews, or are interested, those in the public that are interested in joining our committees and commissions to join us for those meetings.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dugan, anything, can you report out anything for Parks Rec Committee?
Uh, no, we had like pretty much nothing except for the rec board being canceled until January. So, record meetings are not happening.
Uh, Mr. Dalton with policy.
Guys, can you hear me this time?
Yes.
Um, so just one motion out of policy tonight, and that is, uh, to consider a resolution for updating the borough's ethics policy as recommended to committee three, zero. Um, and I'm sure there's probably a little light that needs to be shed on that. If you, uh, could, Mr. Crack?
Uh, do you see a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dalton. I saw Mr. Kirchner's hand up first for the second, so, and now we'll turn it over to Mr. Crack.
Sure, uh, I believe, I believe it was at the September meeting, uh, that this topic came up because we had a scenario of, of, a, a borough consultant, an engineering firm that has done, uh, the lion's share of, of, uh, inspection services on, on construction projects. Uh, one of their tangential offices did work for a project, literally the, the project across the street that's being proposed, uh, from Borough Hall. Uh, they did the, the site work. Uh, yeah, clearly, you know, uh, one, one could argue that they're, they're two different houses, but, uh, as Mr. Kirchner correctly pointed out, it really doesn't matter if it's legal, it's the perception, uh, that is, uh, that is the matter. Uh, and so, uh, he recalled that we had, in fact, I think he was, uh, the one that helped get it through the first time, uh, the author, uh, of the ethics policy of the Borough of Phoenixville. Uh, and so we went back and, and took that, uh, that document and updated it by adding a, a consultant as a definition, uh, as to what a consultant is, and then uh, basically, uh, indicating that throughout the, uh, the borough, that if you are working for the borough, uh, then you cannot work for, uh, uh, an entity trying to do work in the borough. Uh, and so it was, it was a missing link, uh, and it was correctly brought to our attention and last month through, uh, policy, uh, they accepted the changes, uh, that were recommended, and that's what's before you tonight.
Any questions for council on the motion?
Um, I, I, I do just, I mean, I was, because I were in front of, was actually in front of a planning this is also raised.
You're, you're breaking up a little bit, Ms. Moore.
Uh, does this situation exist with some of the other development projects, with some of the other projects? I mean, are we all of a sudden going to be, you know, complicating things for people who have, uh, and are people grandfathered in if they've already been participants and um, you know, in, working as consultants with, uh, ongoing projects, or do they now have to withdraw?
Well, I think, I think the, the, the matter that came into play in as, as a, as a rule of ethics, uh, this, this scenario, uh, was, uh, presented because the firm that was doing the inspection is receiving funding from the borough. And then this firm also was receiving funding from the applicant doing work on a project in the borough. Uh, and that was the conflict of interest that I think was the genesis for the, the discussion back in Jan- in January. I mean, September, I don't wanna take words from Mr. Kirchner's mouth. He could, uh, he could certainly address it, uh, more eloquently than I. Uh, but I think that was the genesis of what that was for. As a volunteer, uh, uh, theoretically, you're not making money, you're a volunteer. Uh, and those that are on, uh, committees have rightfully, even though they are, uh, not making money from the borough, they still step aside when a project they may be working on, uh, comes to the floor. They do not, uh, take a vote on that particular project, so they don't have an influence on the decision of that project. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Kirchner can, uh, address that, uh, more, more eloquently than I.
I, I think that clarifies, I believe, what, what Brian was asking, which was, you know, for some of our appointed consultants or on, on our planning commission or other boards, does this impact them? And it sounds like the answer would be no. Uh, they would just have to recuse as they've always done. Is that succinct?
That, that's correct.
Yeah, that, yes.
I'll speak as a consultant. I, I fully support this. If, if, if we work for the borough and take money from the borough, we shouldn't be working for any private entities uh, that, that do business in the borough. It's that simple, so. Thanks. Mr. Pre- Mr. President, if I may add,
Yes.
That, um, I, I, I think the other thing to keep in mind is that, uh, consultants and, and people who do um, business for the borough should not be in a position to parlay that uh, as a way of promoting their own business um, in, in, in getting business from outside sources, outside the borough, to do inside the borough. That is, using their relationship with the borough as a selling point for um, for their non-borough services. Um, and I, I also just wanted to add, I want to thank, uh, the borough manager, um, Mr. Crack and, uh, uh, the solicitor, Mr. Garner, for, uh, putting this together, uh, the, and they, they did it rather quickly and thoroughly, and I, I thank them for that.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that brings us to, let's see here, Mr. Weiss with ITT.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. So we just have one item coming out of ITT this month. I I think I'll defer to Mr. Crack for an explanation just to ensure that I don't mix up any terms. But essentially, this is the borough being granted the deed for a bridge. Mr. Crack, can you explain more eloquently?
I'll try. As as some of you know, this goes back to a lot of work that Barbara Cohen did as it relates to the steel site and her efforts to get a a Phoenix column style bridge returned back to the borough and then make a connection from one the the south side to the north side or vice versa over the French Creek at the location of the foundry. And that bridge was put into place. A lot of deep digging was required to try to figure out exactly what happened and when. And as best we could figure out is that there was a transfer back and forth of this bridge on several occasions, in some cases to facilitate the receipt of grant funding, which would mean that the borough was an owner at one point. And then the transfer for maintenance purposes, meaning possibly the Hankin Group was the owner, at least till now. And then as we as we were able to then make the improvements for the Schuca River Trail in the borough, we had a trail that came to the top of bank on the north side and a trail that came to top of bank on the south side on property, one owned by the Hankin Group and then one owned by Phoenix Property. But the middle was left out. There was no place to 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 figure anything out. And so we had, we've had great difficulty trying to figure out, you know, how are people crossing on what right of way or what easement? So after a little bit of time of dormancy and quite frankly, non-maintenance, we we had a meeting. Mr. Wall had asked that we look into this. And after several months, we were able to pull a meeting together onsite, I think sometime in July or August timeframe. And had a good solid discussion with Hankin about, you know, who's the owner? You know, what what does ownership mean? And how are we going to get the bridge at least brought to to at least repair? We worked all of that out. Hankin has agreed to fix the the problems at hand on the decking and the railing that are there today and then do what is called a quitclaim deed and deed the property, the entire bridge over to the borough. As you know, I think I mentioned this at least in committee, this is going to be no stranger to us because we are going to own ultimately the Boulevard Bridge that makes the connection from the Steel Point Project to the fire station side. And we are also pursuing grant funding for a pedestrian bridge right outside Borough Hall that will cross over to the to the Steel Point Site. So we're going to be in the in the business of of working and owning bridges. So this this will be our first shot at 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 ownership. We think it's the right thing to do, that it's our recommendation that we move forward with it. It puts it into our hands. I certainly know that, you know, I have a great team with Mr. Watson and the Streets Department. We need to get things done. The call is made and it gets done. And so I think from from the the beautification of the the bridge, it's better that we own it and we we maintain it. And so that's our recommendation, and said we do the quitclaim deed and let them send the send the bridge our way.
And thank you, Mr. Crack. That was definitely more eloquent with much more detail than I ever could have provided. Any questions for anybody else on that?
We should have a motion to to continue discussion. We should have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a quitclaim deed for the Hankin Walking Bridge as recommended out of the ITT Committee three to zero.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion, Mr. Moore.
So the path leading up to the bridge on either side, is that also borough property, Borough Parks, what it that's the Schuca Trail, right?
That is the that is the Schuca Trail. We have, we actually have full easement agreements from the various property owners on all of the trail from literally the Mount Fire Bridge out to Township Line Road with the exception of the bridge.
Okay. Second question is, the bridge will be managed by parks? Will it be managed by streets?
We'll just say it's managed by the borough.
My sense of that.
Most of the most of the heavy lifting work on the trail is is done with our streets folks. We just don't have that staff on on Parks and Recreation. Whether or not it ultimately falls under the the monitoring of Melissa, we haven't made that decision yet. But generally speaking, you know, as as the manager, I'm going to hear the complaints. So I'm going to go to either Mr. Watson or or Ms. Gibbons. And we'll get it, whatever needs to be done, taken care of.
I I ask this in in regards to the fact that I have heard on more than one occasion, people being told they cannot go across the bridge because there are photographers occupying and using it and taking photographs of couple happy couples. So I'm wondering if, once we get ownership of it, they often seem to be related to the organization that runs the foundry or an event that's being that's occurring as a result of the foundry. So that's just a public news that I hope maybe, once we have full ownership of it, we can maybe figure out a way to address.
That was actually part of the discussion we had with with Hankin as to what occurs when there's an event and and how does that occur? Because to your point, we've always maintained that the Schuca River Trail is a public trail, understanding that there's issues as it relates to the bridge itself and be it on the bridge. I think this will help facilitate moving that issue aside, working with the owner of the property and coming up with logical and sensical ways to do things. We understand there's marriages that occur, there's events that occur and what have you. But it's also a public way. And so somewhere in the middle is a is a is an answer that should be workable for both sides.
Any other questions from council on this motion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Anything else out of ITT tonight, Mr. Weiss?
Nothing else for me. Thank you, Mr. President.
With that, we'll move on to Finance Committee, Ms. Dugan.
Okay, I'm going to bundle one through six on this one, but I will make a motion to approve the 2023 prepaid dated nine twelve twenty twenty to ten nine twenty twenty in the amount of seven seven hundred and seventy one thousand nine hundred and seventy nine dollars and two cents to approve the 2020 prepaid ACH dated nine thirty twenty twenty in the amount of ten thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty one cents to approve the 2020 prepaid credit card statement dated nine twelve twenty twenty to ten nine twenty twenty in the amount of fifty seven thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and thirty eight cents to approve the budget increase twenty twenty dash zero one six in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from wastewater balance to wastewater sewage pumping system, lease of land due to the railroad street pumping station land agreement with Norfolk Southern. To approve the staff recommendation to write off the balance of eight hundred and fifty three dollars from the AR account regarding the stormwater man- management violation, AR account seven zero zero nine nine zero, based on the judge's decision in favor of the defendant. And finally, to approve the staff recommendation to write off the balance of nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and fifty cents of a delinquent balance for a rental license at three oh three dash three oh five Main Street.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner for items one through six under the finance report out. Questions on the motion?
Gee, Danny, if you can do that, how come you couldn't do the bond?
I didn't hear that. What?
Okay, with that, seeing no further questions, all those in favor?
I said, Dana could read all that.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Dugan?
Okay, I will then move on to, well, you know, I like to break this up so that, you know, if there might be a question. But anyway, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resul- uh to wait, where am I? Yeah, to approve a resolution authorizing the submission of a regional trails grant program of three hundred thousand from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to be used for a pedestrian walking bridge across French Creek in the borough.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on this item? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Dugan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Center for Public Management, Police and Emergency Services Study Proposal.
Second.
Can we get more information on this?
Yes, we have a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner. Jean, if you want to give us a little bit of background before we vote?
Sure. Originally, when we first put the proposal together, we, as you know, have have been it has been suggested that we allocate the number of officers based on, one, a study that is minimally fourteen to fifteen years old and two, based on a population density number. And, you know, information through the International City and County Managers Association came to light about, you know, what 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 are the real metrics that should be looked at when when you're considering, you know, how to staff your department and the like? And so I brought that information to you about a year ago, give or take. And we had a good dialogue, but it was not something that you wanted to do in the night in twenty nineteen and suggested that we revisit it in in twenty twenty. And as has as has happened in twenty twenty, as we began to move forward, we also then really began to move forward with the the fire department and the recreation center. And of course, the dialogue also included, what about a fire chief? And so I went back to CPSM and asked if they could take a look at not only the police department, but also just public safety as a whole to help us better understand, you know, what is it that that the borough is made up of? What is its responsibilities and its responses to the makeup of the, you know, the three point eight square miles of Phoenixville? And they came back with the proposal that's in your packet, which is they will look at not only the police department, but also emergency services as a whole, the to give you some better idea of which direction you might want to to pursue. This is this is this is important on many levels, notwithstanding, you know, how how many officers do we need? How is work being conducted? But also, as it relates to ambulance service and emergency management as well as as the fire department. So I think you're going to get a much better feel for what this borough needs moving forward. We've got, you know, obviously, the buildings, we've got new changes and things. We've got two fire station employees now. And it's time that we bring a new study to the table and look at it on a more global basis. So that's what's before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Crack. Any other questions on the motion or on the proposal? Seeing no other questions, we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And finally, Ms. Dugan?
Well, I got one more. I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise a public hearing to consider an ordinance for the adoption of the 2021 tax mileage.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Dugan, seconded by Mr. Moore. Questions on this item, on this motion?
Mr. President, if I might, I would like to just reference that from what I said earlier in the evening. Typically, the ordinance that would be before you would have a it it as it says, the mileage is totaled seven point three mils. But that's now going to be broken into three separate categories. So there will be a line on the tax document, four point seven mils, four point seven six mils for general fund purposes, one point three two mils for fire protection and one point two one mils for public parks and recreation. And as we've told in the past, this document is is, we believe, is the high side. We have told you that we will be working on with finance to finalize some of the the information that was presented tonight because it will influence, we hope, and anticipate a downward movement. I ain't going to say, you know, it's going to go down X mils or X percentage, but it 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 arguably is going to go down. So when we do this ordinance, we are anticipating that the one that you will actually approve or at least make a motion to consider in December will be a a number less than that, ideally in all three categories and and a total number less than the seven point three mils.
Questions from council pertaining to the the motion on the advertised mileage? Okay. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor? Opposed?
Just one third, when is?
Well, hold on just a moment here. I believe Mr. Moore had a question, but it seems.
It's unnecessary. It's just about when the public hearing is, but I I remember now how this works. So thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay. And so I believe that was a six to one. Six one vote. Ms. Dugan, anything else?
No, I think we've spent enough money. We're good.
Very good. With that, we will go into the second round of public participation. Any members of the public wishing to make any comment on any of the items tonight? Please use the live stream system on our borough website and simply enter your your name and address and public and what your public comments is. And borough staff will read it aloud for all of us in council to to hear and consider. So with that, we will take an awkward pause here and have any public comment made available. And while we wait, I I believe we can listen now. We don't have any executive session. And while we wait, I believe we can list, now, we don't have any executive session tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Crack?
That is correct.
Okay.
At this time, Mr. Ewald, I don't see any comment coming through.
Okay, any members of the public that are looking to make public comment? Should you, should you still wish to, please go ahead and enter. I know we have one more presentation from Mr. Crack, and so if anything comes through between now and the end of his presentation, I will certainly entertain a final round of public participation. So in the interest of time, I'd like to at least close this round of public participation and move on to staff reports. I believe, Mr. Crack, you have some items for the ongoing or the upcoming projects.
The thing that I want to mention to you is that, you know, obviously, we've done the bond ordinance and we put the information out to the Barrett Agency for the bond. That information is moved forward and then we'll go through the Department of Community and Economic Development debt act process for December. What that means, though, is that that bond is a finite number. And we want to make sure that we keep our numbers moving forward. So I will be working with the solicitor over the next several days, possible week, with our contractor Gorski to finalize the contracting documents so that we can get the long lead items and the pricey items locked into place so that it doesn't affect our numbers on our bond. That's a lot of work that we've got to do, but it's necessary to make sure that, you know, the effects of the election and everything else don't do anything more to the projects than has already been done. We've got good numbers and we've got the funding to manage that. And I just want to make sure that you're aware that we're going to be moving forward with those those documents to get those contracts lined up and begin the process of basically starting our, starting our projects. Mostly because of the long lead items and the concern for pricing. But I don't anticipate any construction until, maybe by the end of this year, but certainly the first part of January in twenty twenty one. But I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that there's still a lot more work to be done. The financial side is done. Now we got the workload of getting two projects under agreement and moving forward.
And Mr. Crack, would you need a motion to authorize moving forward with these contracts, or is this an update?
I think Mr. Garner would tell me that I need a motion to do that. He'd feel a lot better if we had a motion. I certainly would feel better if he feels better.
Yeah, that's not our decision. That's council, so please, please do.
Should I make a motion? I will do it. So, so moved.
Chuck, does that cover the base?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dugan, and a second by Mr. Dalton. Questions on the motion, members of council? I think the short form of this is that since we're moving forward with the bond, that we can, we go ahead and start executing the contracts related to the bond and move everything forward. Is that the short form? Gene?
Yeah, I mean, it's very similar to what we did. Wow, wow, seven years ago. Phew. We've been in that building seven years. Well, not this year. I guess we can't count this year. Very similar process we did. It was the same, same time of year, same time of, same type of process.
Okay, very good. Any questions from council on this motion? Okay, seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Mr. Manager, any other updates or staff reports?
None that I can think of. We are, we're meeting with the state as it relates to the RACP for the Recreation Center on Thursday. So we'll start the significant documentation. As you know, that's a book that's about, you know, a half a foot thick that we've got to get. That's just yet. One more thing that we've got to get moving forward is to make sure that the RACP money is obligated now that we've got this moving forward. So it kind of answers, I think, Mr. Moore's earlier question in the evening about the net effects of grants and things of that sort. So this guest reads statements about being shovel-ready and showing that we're there helps lock in all of those various funding streams. This is yet one word that we want to lock into place.
Police, Fire, Planning, Public Works, Finance and Human Relations or Human Resources staff reports are all in your packet. Assuming, seeing if there's any questions on that with that. If staff has received any further public comment?
No, Mr. Ewald, I have not, and we did test the system to ensure that comments were coming through.
Oh, very good. Thank you. With that, that is our agenda for the night. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much to everybody, and we will see you soon.